Yes ma'am. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Solana. Councilmember Brockhaus. Councilmember Colias. And Chairwoman Sandoval.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. First item is approval of the minutes for December 14th. Is there a motion? All in favor? And opposed? Motion passed. The next item is Citizens to be heard. Do we have any second opinions? Thank you. Our next item is the San Antonio Climate Ready Update on Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. It is a big week, San Antonio. It may be a big two weeks with the Bloomberg announcement in terms of climate action and adaptation. Congratulations on getting to this point. It doesn't mean we've saved the planet yet, but it shows how you're going to do that.
And thank you for that minor introduction. It's not building me up, no pressure at all. Committee members, thank you for this opportunity. As the councilwoman mentioned, it is a big, big week. When we started this planning process over a year ago, I remember when... So just a little bit of context of where, how we got here. One of the things I would want to mention is even before this August 11, 2016, the cities, stakeholders, residents, this issue of climate isn't new. There's been many individuals in the community that are very passionate about this and working on this for years. For us, the first conversation formally began when we developed the SA Tomorrow Sustainability Plan, which is a general plan covering lots of different components of sustainability, and then building in some elements around climate. So we did agree on gas inventory. We had a climate trends analysis. And the goal was to have that help foster conversation with council around the importance of climate change. And right away, even before that plan was adopted, there was conversations with different councilmembers, with Councilman Lopez and his committee, we need to take action on this. And so on Mayor Nuremberg's first day at overseeing council, real big policy direction came from the resolution that was passed by council supporting Paris Climate Agreement. I was actually on vacation in South Padre Island and started getting texts about, well, it looks like we're doing that, we're doing a climate plan. So it's been a long road. And what we will be delivering to the public tomorrow, we think is a really solid plan that provides a great framework for the community. And we're really looking forward to the conversations to make sure that what we find and deliver to council is as good as can be for San Antonio. So what are we doing? You know, so the first step with this SA Climate Ready process is we need to understand what the climate issues are. And so a big part of the process has been understanding not just global climate change issues, but what it means locally. And so really taking a look at our role and our emissions contributing to climate change, as well as what those local impacts that we're going to experience. So as part of that, the next step is we need to take action. We need to develop plans to reduce our emissions. And then we need to acknowledge what those climate projections are going to be, what it means to our community, and develop plans to adapt and then prepare. And then finally pull that all together into the plan that we hopefully release tomorrow. So the big thing again, the idea of the policy direction was fairly clear, but there's been a really robust process to actually get to the point of putting the meat on the bones of this plan. Really, the commitments of community members that participated directly in this process as a part of the steering committee or on one of our five technical working groups, talking about 90-plus people who spent really since February, three hours a month with us, talking through these issues. I've been doing this for quite some time. I've never had community members so committed and so involved to spend so much time in that process. And so I think there's a tremendous amount of respect and kudos that go to all those folks that were involved, as well as all of our partner agencies and other city staff. Engagement's at the core of this. The plan needs to reflect the priorities of the community. If the community doesn't see those values in the plan, it'll be difficult to move it forward. So my staff, staff of CPS, partner agencies, members of the steering committee, and the technical working groups attended 145-plus events. Those can be community meetings, neighborhood meetings, direct stakeholder meetings, going to Monarch Fest, anywhere they can get out there and talk to folks where we could, one, make them aware of this process, and then try to solicit as much feedback as possible. We also had a series of surveys throughout the process. We'll have another one that'll be going out shortly after the release of the plan. But we garnered over 3,400 responses. And the goal of those surveys was again to gauge support and understanding and to really be able to get the plan to reflect those desires. The other thing we do, what we started doing for years at the Sustainability Plan is we ask basic demographic questions as part of the survey, as well as when we're out in the public. And we were able to see after the first couple of surveys that we were short or were missing the mark in some of our demographic profile. And so in order to address that, we were lucky enough to get a grant to bring on an Equity Fellow for the summer, who really focused on getting engagement in those zip codes and those demographics that we hadn't been able to get through other means. It was an incredibly successful process. This individual was even able to get feedback from homeless individuals, from seniors, things that we wouldn't necessarily even understand. There's a quote in there from somebody who's homeless who raised an issue about just the availability of public water dumps. You start talking about extreme heat and vulnerable populations, I might not have thought about that. So I think making sure that we continue this robust diverse engagements is really significant. So some of the things that we heard, there's overall awareness, interest in clean energy. Mobility always rise at the top of the list. People want options other than driving around in single acts of vehicles. Clean water, clean air, good jobs. Those are the themes that are reflected in this plan. There's a couple of things I'm sure we'll hear through this process. The business community, we've had lots of meetings with the business community, chambers, professional organizations, businesses. They haven't passed judgment. I think they're waiting to see what's in this plan. I think their big concerns are around what are the costs? Does it make things unaffordable, does it have economic impact? So I think we just need to be positive that going forward. On the other side, I think there's very passionate and smart folks who want to see us be more aggressive. Want to see us be more, actually more quickly on the energy front. And so I think key to this is continuing those conversations going forward, making sure this is a data-driven process where we understand what the implications of the decisions that we're going to be making. So in terms of what's in the draft, the first thing that you'll notice, there's a lot in this plan. One of the things that we really wanted to make sure that the plan was readable. We didn't want a 200, 250-page document that was just overwhelming. And those plans exist out there. If you want to see one, I can send it to you. So we wanted to make sure it was as approachable as possible. Basic components, it frames why we're doing this, it frames some of our history, how we've been leading. One of the real big keys to this plan that we hope you notice is the idea of climate equity and really grounding the plan in equity. We know that climate change does not impact everybody equally. That our most vulnerable populations, whether they're seniors, those without access to cars, low-income residents, may feel the brunt of climate change and may not be able to have as many adaptive opportunities. And they also may be contributing less to those impacts. So we really wanted to make sure that this plan reflected that. One, in our engagement, making sure that we're getting as many voices as possible. And two, creating a definition that grounds what climate equity means for this community. It was created by our Climate Equity Working Group. It's going to evolve as we continue to have these conversations. We also created a climate equity screening mechanism, which is a series of questions that should be asked prior to initiating an action. And the goal of that is to make sure that we are considering any unintended consequences. Doesn't mean we're not going to do something, but make sure if there is an issue, we can mitigate it beforehand. And that will also require ongoing conversations with the climate equity and social justice community to make sure that we're continuing to have their voices involved in the implementation of this process. Then we'll go into mitigation, how do we reduce our emissions? How do we adapt? And then how do we implement? And really, that's really where the hard work is going to begin. It's one thing to have a plan, it's another thing to make sure that there's successful implementation of measures. I sort of talked about this already. So these are sort of the components in the climate equity screening mechanism. Access and accessibility, affordability, cultural preservation, health, safety, and security. We also in the plan provide examples of inequities in our community. Folks with access, lack of access to vehicles, individuals living in poverty. The entire plan, as well as the equity section in particular, we worked very closely with the Office of Equity, getting their feedback to make sure that we were considering the language we were using and what's the best way to make sure that we're highlighting the importance of the intensive equity. So in terms of this idea of the challenge and the response, it's really about what the meat of the plan is. There's some foundational parts of this plan. One is the greenhouse gas inventory. The other thing I should mention is the plan covers community. It's what the community really needs to do in terms of reducing emissions and adapting, and also coast as an organization. What do we need to do to make sure that we are leading? I think the intent is before we go out and really start expecting others to take action, we need to make sure that we are ourselves leading. But we have that greenhouse gas inventory which serves as the baseline, as well as climate projections out through 2100. These were completed by DTSA, Dr. Khedira, we did a fantastic job. And it shows that our climate is changing now, and it's progressing to continue to change. And so the question is, this plan's response to that, how do we start making different decisions or at least considering those impacts in our everyday decision-making and projects and programs? This is sort of the meat, and I won't really go into big detail. But this is basically the plan. To meet Paris, we need to develop a carbon neutral pathway. By 2050, you can see that we're down by zero. One thing to consider though is if we're going to... There's only so much we can do by reducing emissions, improving, reducing emissions associated with mobility, buildings, or energy supply. At some point, carbon sequestration is going to have to be part of the implementation. And when we look at other cities, it's a similar situation where we're going to have to have technology to help pull carbon out of the atmosphere. But basically, the orange line is business as usual. If we do not do anything, if we don't take action, emissions are going to continue to increase. And that includes, built into that is our population growth, as well as all the energy consumption that will be incentivized from that population growth. That green line is the minimum pathway to getting that carbon neutral ball. And then you can see that blue band is what that 1.5 Paris pathway looks like. I think it's, science is evolving, and right now that's our understanding is we need to land within that glide path. So then we get to mitigation, and I won't go through the minutia of the plan, but basically, strategies are broken down into various categories. Reducing emissions in energy, reducing emissions in building energy consumption, transportation energy, circularity, which is how we are processing materials in our community, making sure that any opportunity we can to get something out of the wave stream and ideally recycle back to our economy is the goal. Looking at biodiversity and healthy ecosystems, and then education, and making sure that we continue this kind of conversation going forward and doing additional analysis as needed. On the adaptation side, you can see on the right are just some of our long-term end-of-century climate projections. As of now, climate scientists are saying we're trending towards the high emission scenario. So it's going to get hotter. We're going to start seeing days of 110 degrees. It's going to get drier. When we do experience weather events, they will tend to be more extreme. And so again, what does this mean for the city to be able to deliver services? What does this mean for our partner agencies to do the same? And what does that mean to families and residents in our neighborhoods? So again, it's how do we start building resilience across the community? And then implementation really is the key. We don't want this plan just sitting static. We want to make sure that it's being implemented. So some of the things we are looking at in building the plan is reporting. Every two years, we'll be updating the greenhouse gas inventory. That'll be a very clear indicator of how we're doing. And we'll be able to dig into the data to see what sectors are we moving in the right direction and what sectors aren't. So it'll be very clear if we are making progress. And then the other part is making sure we still have a governance structure in place. So we do envision an advisory committee of community members, stakeholders, partner agencies, who can really help make sure we're moving this forward, trying to continue to engage civic leaders in this process moving forward. At the end of the day, I think the biggest thing that we need to do is continue the conversation. I mean, and I said this when we started the process, we need to become as literate and aware around climate as we are around water. I came here five years ago, and I couldn't believe how aware we were about conservation and where our water comes from. I think it's the same conversation that we continue to make sure people understand why we need to make these decisions and take these actions. So Bloomberg, really quickly. We were one of 25 cities who were selected as American Cities Climate Challenge. A very rigorous process. It's a great opportunity for us. There's no money coming directly to us. It's $2.5 million worth of technical and staff support. We will be receiving two contract employees from the National Resources Defense Council, who will be housed in my office. One will focus on implementing building policies and programs, and one will be focused on transportation policies and programs. We'll also have access to national experts such as the Rocky Mountain Institute, NACTO, the Institute for Market Transformation. If we need assistance with communications, marketing, polling, this will be a huge boost for us out of the gate to start implementing this plan. Because it aligns very well with some of the priority strategies that we outlined. And this is really the big thing that we're at right now. And I think we'll also be looking to council to help with this part as well. Draft plan, we posted tomorrow. We need to get the word out. We'll have media reporting on the draft release tomorrow, articles. The big impact is going to be getting out to as many people as possible. So some things we're doing, we have a contract with a consultant who's going to help us with citywide communications, developing marketing materials, helping to pitch stories. On the ground side, we have two contract employees, temp workers, who are going to be targeting, continuing the work of the Equity Fellow, focused on various specific areas to make sure those who traditionally aren't involved in our processes are, as best we can, made aware and have an opportunity to weigh in. Simple things, making sure that the material is in our city libraries, making sure we're pushing it out through existing email or city mechanisms, and really having any opportunity to talk to a neighborhood association, a business coalition, anybody to make sure that they're aware and have the opportunity to weigh in. And then we'll be in touch with you all to see if we can start highlighting other specific events or avenues in your districts that we should be using. The other thing we've been making sure we've been doing is touching base with GPE to make sure we're taking some of our guidance and looking at their suggestions as far as other avenues that we should be taking. And then in terms of our timeline, tomorrow is the release. We'll have a 30-day public comment period. The way we're planning on doing this is the more comments, the better. We will take all of those, determine if there needs to be any adjustments made to the plan. All of the comments that will be received will be made publicly available at the end of the process on the city website. Basically, what we have done and summary of what we have heard. After the comment period closes, we'll be going to the Planning Commission, we'll be doing a Planning Commission work session briefing, then going back for a full briefing, and we'll be looking for a positive recommendation from them to bring to council. But before that, we will be revisiting with our steering committee and the technical working groups, as well as general public, to provide them an update of any of the changes that we made in the plan. We just want to make sure we get that final feedback from them to make sure that we're all on the same page. Then we'll come back to community health and equity to provide status update as far as particularly any changes that we've made or anything that we've heard. And then hopefully having a positive recommendation out of your committee, and then moving on to B session and ideally A session in April of the show.
That is the first presentation.
Thank you very much, Doug. That was a lot of information, so thank you for doing that so succinctly. Before we move on to council comments, just a couple of things I want to share. In case it wasn't clear, when you talk about Paris, you're talking about our commitment that we made on in June of 2017 to uphold the spirit of the Paris Climate Agreement, which is to limit warming through our part, whatever's within our jurisdiction as a city, to limit warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius average worldwide from one year.
So basically, it's by end of century, starting at what they're calling pre-industrial, which depending upon who you talk to, but basically 1880, so looking at the historic record out through 2100. And then one other thing I'd mention, this clarification, the Paris Agreement is non-binding. This is something that nations are voluntarily signing on to do. And I think from the, we've seen mayors, over 400 mayors nationally sort of step up and saying, you know what, this is very important, we need to work on this. So I think that's the motivation for council's action.
And 1.5 degrees Celsius, because what happens at 1.6? Or what happens at 1.7?
So there's, it all comes down to probabilities of impacts. And so there's actually a graphic.
You're not helping me here, Doug.
So basically, the reason why 1.5 is so important is what's... Well, climate scientists are talking about our tipping points, that if we surpass that 1.5 degrees, you know, language of sort of uncontrolled climate change, where we'll see acceleration of sea level rise, we'll see an acceleration of extreme heat, more severe storms, and it'll be something that will be less manageable. So I think life on Earth is not going to end, but as are the world we know now, the society that we have now, the expectations we have now will be grossly different. We're talking about food supply, food production, and we're talking about quality of life, health, decreased air quality. The likelihood of maintaining what we need decreases once we surpass that 1.5.
They call it catastrophic climate change.
Correct.
Right, okay. So I've been asked, and this is a conversation that many people have, is why does it matter if just San Antonio does this? You know, if we've got so many other cities in the nation and nations in the world, what difference?
And again, that's the same, that's a conversation I think we're hearing, everybody's hearing. And a couple of my thoughts is it's one of responsibility and leadership. I think while this is a global issue, the causes and effects are local. If we do nothing, we are helping guarantee that we are going to experience the impacts. And so I think being able to, and I think from a Texas example, we're seeing cities starting to step up. Dallas is currently just created their greenhouse gas inventory. They're going to be developing a plan. Houston's developing a plan. I like to think some of it has to do with San Antonio getting in the game and saying, you know, we're going to do this. So I think it's a lot of this leadership. The other thing that's really important is all of the actions in the plan, it's not just about climate change. It's, you know, there's things that we've been doing for some time already. We've been promoting renewables and energy efficiency and mobility and affordable housing. There's lots of multiple benefits for why we're doing this. I think this is a lens by which we need to assess the greenhouse gas and the climate preparedness impacts of what we're doing. I think we take a look at our programs, our resources through that lens and see if there's ways of reprioritizing or leveraging. So I don't think it's necessarily something new that we have to be doing. I think it's just being more pragmatic and more efficient with the resources we have, understanding what the climate implications are of those decisions.
Sure, and I would agree with you. Well, I want to point out, there are two parts to this plan, right? And so one of them is adaptation, which means in cases of extreme weather or whatever consequences we may be facing, how prepared are we to face that and to be resilient from that, which is absolutely within our purview and our charge really as elected officials for city management. And in the case of the mitigation or the reducing the pollution, what I see in all the mitigation measures that you propose are opportunities for improving quality of life. All of those ideas are things that someone can get excited and behind. And I think it's when we get to the implementation phase, it will be up to us, or whoever's here in a few years' time, to implement that in such a way that we do achieve an improved quality of life and that it's affordable and that the benefits are really worth the effort. So not just about the climate, but actually the quality of life.
Absolutely. Well, and what's interesting, the feedback that we get from folks, they're not necessarily on board with climate, but they see the value. They want, they know what they want for their family. It just happens that those measures can help move the needle on climate as well.
So right before I pass it on, I want to tell my colleagues that yesterday I attended a meeting of all the technical working groups that were involved in this and the steering committee, there were about 80 people there, 90 people at pre-k for SA East. The room was full, the energy was absolutely palpable in the room. That is the goal that they've been working toward for a year was finally in this document. So I was very excited to be there with them. And we talked about how we were going to get buy-in. And then there was a moment when people in the room spoke up and expressed their thoughts. And one woman reminded us that, at first I was taken aback. I was like, are you telling me I'm old? She said, "Most of you won't be alive when some of these consequences happen, but I will. So I'm asking you to please keep in mind that what you're doing today, every action you're taking is going to influence my future." And, you know, what environment she's going to live in. So I wanted to share that with you. And then there was one young man, a very young man, who said, "You know, I saw the council get behind the Go Vote No campaign. And I challenge you to have that same enthusiasm around making sure that this passes and this gets implemented, and we have a secure climate for our community." And I didn't say this at the time, but I surely hope we do better than we did in the Go Vote No campaign, because, you know, those were three charter amendments that ultimately we're dealing with, right? These consequences cannot be dealt with in that way. They act, we'll need a lot more from us. So I'm going to pass it on to Councilwoman DeLax.
Thanks. So I consider what you're saying, all those things are going to get drier.
Less precipitation.
Right, and so the next meeting, the next topic on our agenda is going to be about Atlas 14. And I think the presentation is going to show us that it's going to get wetter.
So it'll get drier, and less precipitation. But when we do experience events, they'll be more severe. So we will see more increased spikes in precipitation. But, and this is a shout-out to Nefi. I think Atlas 14 is a huge, big deal. And I think just being able to update to what we know as far as those precipitation values are. I think when we start looking at these climate projections, I think we're getting more conversation to understand what those implications are and how we address them. But I think, you know, I think the Atlas 14 is a huge step for this country.
So I can be frank, I'm less interested in the, thank you for that. I'm less interested in the debate about global climate change versus today as I am about... interested in the debate about global climate change purposes today as I am about how the rubber's going to be pulled into San Antonio for purposes of implementation, right? And so I'm looking at Slide 9, where you've got your mitigation. And ultimately, this is, I think, in my opinion, this is the most important slide.
Yes, well, and this is just the same.
This is what you're going to do. And so, you know, it's four, five, six, seven, eight that I want to focus on. I understand four, right, where we're going to be basically just gathering information and possibly publishing. You and I have spoken about this, this is parallel to something that I've got to see in Denver, which is quite interesting.
And it's been shown to be effective?
Yeah, it's been shown to be effective, where, you know, owners of the buildings will report and participate voluntarily to the city so that the city can then, you know, celebrate those buildings that are using less, and then, you know, kind of show other folks best practices that are happening. How do I say this, I like the voluntary. Number five, I'm stuck here, to inform owners, builders, renters, and potential buyers, research and develop an energy and water rating system for all commercial and residential properties. I don't understand.
So basically, the intent of this, it's a making, you know, figuring out if there's mechanisms by which folks who are potentially interested in acquiring a property or renting a property might have some sort of access to some information, almost like an energy star, knowing this is, this is the energy use. I think it's something new, I think we'd have to really vet and figure out what that would look like, but that's the intent, that it would sort of drive the market to say, my building is more efficient, therefore I can receive a higher sale value for it.
So I get it.
So that's what the intent of that.
So that, you know, customers will know sort of the green stats and that would increase. So are you envisioning this being a mandating?
No, this is, I think right now, it's, it's an idea that we would need to convene and, one, look at what those best practices out there and determine if there's a pathway for it. So I think there's been no determination yet as far as what specifics are.
Okay, number six, I don't know what zero net energy means.
Yep, so basically, zero net energy means, at the end of the day, the energy that a building is consuming is being offset by renewable energy. And so, and again, this is, this is a long-term one. You know, when we researched other cities, it's still a relatively new concept, but I think it's saying, we aspire to this. So basically, it would be making a hyper-energy efficient building with existing technology that's available, and either through renewables or, you know, purchasing green power from another place, you get to a zero net energy facility.
Okay, so is what you're envisioning, meaning this out, is it commercial or anti-city residential?
This, I think at this point, the first step that I, that I think that we envision is looking at the city first, you know, looking at, you know, how do we start moving our buildings more towards, towards that? But I think this one really comes down to what the economic and technological capabilities are, and I think, I might, I think we might have even adjusted this language a little bit to factor in the idea that we need to make sure that before we get to that point, there's the feasibility to do it. This is, you know, this is basically saying, this is where we need to aspire to at a later date, to make sure our building stock is as efficient as possible.
All right. And then reduce water consumption, support all opportunities to further reduce San Antonio's water consumption, both per capita and total, you know, consumption basis, to support all opportunities. Very broad.
Yeah, basically, this is one that we, we sort of look at this one that sort of SARS sort of owns this one, and I think it's really making sure that we're supporting SARS and their efforts to continue on their long-term goals for conservation.
Okay, so, thank you. The answer to my question is, this is still sort of in the baking, right?
Oh, it's still all draft right now.
And it's all drafted, so a lot of these are placeholders for more precise.
Well, I think depending upon the feedback that we get, if we need to refine and clarify, that's, that's the process that we'll be doing.
So I'm sensitive to, and I certainly believe whatever the scientists are telling us, I'm not a scientist, but, you know, 99% of us are telling us that, you know, it's getting worse, and, you know, I've raised it up, and you know what they're talking about. However, I can tell you that, you know, just from my own observation, from the work with my clients, and from talking with some, you know, folks here in town, there's one interesting phenomenon happening in my district, which is, there's a certain price point of home which no longer exists or is quickly becoming an endangered species, right? It's $200,000 range or something like that, maybe less, $175 to $200,000. When I talk to the builders, I express to them some anxiety, right, because those are the kinds of homes where my seniors could live and age in place next to their children, right, and continue to live in the neighborhoods or near the neighborhoods where they, you know, grew up and lived their entire lives. Those are the kinds of price points for young professionals who are getting all these new cybersecurity jobs, right? And what's happening is, and again, because of, you know, that, I'm figuring out, you know, this population of folks that I want to be able to have living in that district, because, you know, we've learned that all this does is gentrify neighborhoods, and all it does is leave people behind, right? There's nothing good about having this big gap. So I started thinking, oh, that was, like, why aren't you guys building out, you know, these homes at these price points? And what I keep hearing from them is, the math doesn't work, right? Right now, because of, you know, property taxes, but also, you know, regulatory costs, and the initial costs sunk into just being able to start building, right, we either have to build a very cheap house, right, or a very expensive house, and we can't build a middle-of-the-road house. So why am I complaining about this to you? Because there is anxiety within that community, that all we're going to end up doing is making it more expense, making it a more expensive product, right? And a more expensive product gets passed on to, you know, ultimately, citizens of San Antonio. With regards to rental properties, you know, those additional costs just end up getting passed on to people who are renting, folks that don't have the right to protest their property taxes, and folks that are, you know, usually not very wealthy at all, right, and are living check-to-check, and, you know, this is our hourly workers, right, and the poor, and people that don't have a lot of resources. And so my concern, right, and I think it's, I think it's okay to say what I'm about to say, and that is that on the one hand, we've got these aspirations and goals, on the other hand, you know, this presentation is devoid of any economic impact analysis on how to get there, and the economic impact that we're, I mean, neither Mr. Halls, Broncos, or I or Santa Barbara are going to end up paying these things. It's going to be Mosaic, it's going to be, you know, Lennar Homes, Chessmark, and all those people who are going to end up paying for them. And they're going to end up having to make just really simple mathematical choices, right? Do they want to do business in San Antonio, or is it easier to do business in Bernie or Shertz or Soma or maybe another county? And so that's the balancing act that I must be conscious of. And I know that your job wasn't to balance that, your job was to come up with a climate adaptation plan. It's my job, sort of be worried about the.
Well, I can talk a little, I can talk a little to that. You know, so the plan does include a high-level economic analysis. I mean, basically, the consultants have strategies, there's some existing tools by which you can get some rough numbers of what the cost implication is for city, business, resident. But again, that's just, that's not the detail that I think we're talking about. I think the one thing I would say is, one, as, anything that we implements, implements in there is going to need this very conversation with all those stakeholders to figure out what those implications are, because, you know, the idea of affordability is really paramount in this. I mean, we start talking about making sure that strategies that are implemented don't have those negative consequences that we want to avoid. And so it's not simply about shifting the burden to one group, but how do we mitigate that or distribute that? So I think it's going to require really, you know, yes, this is where we need to go, these are the decisions we need to make, but the question is, how do you, how do you do that? And what are the structures of that? So I think that's the, that's the, that's the process. Nothing's been baked into here, it's setting that target, it's setting, here's some pathways, but then we need to figure out what that pathway is.
I was just going to add, as I said, so we're going to continue to have these tough conversations today about, about this plan, we're going to have in the next two months before council considers this, but even after the plan is adopted, as we get into different implementations, whether it be ordinance, to adopt the golden code, or something else, this plan does not preclude us from having those conversations at that point as well. So what this is, it's aspirational, we put it out there, we agree that it does have to be balanced, so we're going to have those tough conversations today, but we're also going to have those in the future, every point of the way, as we bring items, policies to council, those are consideration, we're going to have those tough conversations at that point too. The difference is, we're going to have a plan that says, this is what we aspire to as council considers those policies.
Right, right, so, and thank you for that, that's what I wanted to hear. And so two things, right? I do think that whatever it is we do here with this plan, that it can't be done without being also informed by the mayor's counsel on affordable housing, right? Whatever the heck it is called, forgive me, I'm having a comment, but, you know, what you heard in there was, the only way we're going to figure out a way to fill the gap for, you know, additional housing is if we reduce regulations. Like they literally said that, you know, Gene Dawson and, you know, Ms. Berge Sabo and, you know, these other folks telling you that, you know, hoping that we do all the right things to, you know, spur more construction of homes within a certain price point, making them affordable, cannot, is not enough, right? You also have to accompany that with some realistic, difficult conversations about what, you know, restrictions or regulations we're going to loosen up, right, in order to facilitate more and make the math pencil out better for purposes of, you know, profit investment. As I said, at the end of the day, you know, these businesses are for the business of charity, they're in the business of returning value to their investors, right? And so what's, what worries me is that this that you're presenting to us, Doug, might, you know, go far enough down the road without being informed by that equally important, you know, component of another problem that we're trying to fix, right? And so, hold on, I promise, I'm almost done here. So I think I've made my point, and the second point is, I'm most excited about those parts of the plan that are more carrot and less stick, right? And so if we can focus on getting people's buy-in as opposed to mandating, I think you find more success every time you do that, and I'm done.
The one thing I would just say really quickly is, affordability is one of the key components of that equity mechanism, and so before, you know, before we do anything, we want to have that conversation, and that's built into the point.
Thank you.
Councilman Hall.
And I'll just make short comments of both my comments of, or thoughts of, or any comment upon it, and that is, I'm all for, you know, working on our responsibility of protecting the environment. I think it's something we individuals, we all should do, as well as communities and so forth, but I do want to worry a little bit about the cost, not only to the city and other entities, but to business folks, and then how that's passed down, particularly to those that are low income and so forth. And then the other comment that I had was the long picture, which is, you know, the world picture, San Antonio is a little dot, and if we're doing, doing all these costs and taking a lot of responsibilities, and others are not, you know, that's a huge issue. Then if other countries are not, that's even more of a huge issue. But I do believe that every individual, to the individual, should be doing what they can to protect their environment, so this is just a little step above that, but I wish we could push others to do the same.
Thank you, Councilman, and I would say that by demonstrating that it can be done, I think that's a, that's a first step. So to, just to flesh out a little bit of this dialogue, when we received briefings on this previously when it was under development, there was a discussion about your economic analysis tool that we are the first ones to be using in, no, well, there was a tool, and when we get our draft of the plan, which will be tomorrow, there will be some information on that.
So, and to clarify, the plan right now, when you look at it, has, there's three buckets of costs, and so it starts attributing those costs to each strategy. I've asked the consultants that we're going to need a layer down from that, where we'll need to provide the community and council some more specifics as far as what those numbers are, as well as, you'll also see there's greenhouse gas reduction impacts from sort of low to high, we're going to need to drill down a little more. So there'll be additional detail coming in the future iterations of the plan before it comes to council.
And when you come back to us?
We come back. Let's see.
March 26?
He's here somewhere. March 26.
Okay.
Or do you like us here?
And Councilman Rockhouse tells us he has any ready comments?
Yes, sir.
Sergeant Redley, that was with the resident, District 6 resident, City Hall. We talked about this yesterday, you caught me, and I just want to echo that I'm 100% in support of Councilor Wise's comments. Please, when we're talking to the community, the cost must be associated with every proposal, because it's in, and I want to be very clear to the public, it's in the billions, and somebody has to pay for that. And if we don't, if we're not cognizant, the truth of this, I mean, like it keeps in your head, you can worry all day long about being carbon neutral, people are worried about making their car payment, my friend, they've got bigger worries than, everybody loves the environment until you've got to pay for it. And I think we don't keep that at the top, right, or list of things, if we want to say we do this, there better be a cost associated with that, because that's going to temper people's reality in their paycheck and their life, and, okay, how far am I willing to go at this point, knowing that this is the cost? It's going to be a great discussion, I'm going to try to reserve, there are some things there I can't support, and I've talked about it, but it's a great discussion, I think, to take to the community, because this is real now, and when you put those nine digits behind those costs, right, the 10-digit costs behind these projects, I think the community's going to be, you know, we're going to have a lot of concern. So cost with idea, and then we take those facts to the community and let them decide, and as best we can, we live within that mix, because we talk about sprawl, but at the same time, we're incentivizing sprawl, we're rising the cost of the developer to do work within the city limits. You want to know why I ask sprawl? It's too expensive to build in the city of San Antonio. A lot of these ideas make it even more expensive to build in the city of San Antonio. They'll continue to leave us because they can't afford to work with us, and the same will go with our residents. If we price them out of their life, they're going to have problems. So we've got to be, Doug, I'm begging you, man, we've got to put numbers with everything you're doing, so the community has a fair opportunity to make a choice. And if the community says go, inspired, then let's go. But if they don't have both of those together, they can't make a fair decision. So let's just try to work on that as best we can, I've been, I think I've been consistent on that from day one, which is, let's make sure the dollars are there. I think there's some good things in here we can do, the carrot versus stick conversation is exactly where we need to be, I'd love to incentivize these things as opposing to mandating them, and let's see who comes on board, and Councilman Hall's exactly right, we're specing the entire thing, we should be doing what's right, we should care about the climate and its future, in the context of taking care of the families and residents that we currently have right now, because there's two sides to that conversation. It is great work, I looked through it already, and I checked it out, and you and I talked yesterday. Thank you for what you and the team have done, it's a lot of work that's gone into this, and now you're going to, you're going to face the gauntlet for the next 60, 90 days, and it's not going to be easy, and you're going to get all sides, and it's going to be tough, but I'm proud of the work you've done to this point, and you've been 100% coming to me, trying the best you can to earn my vote in as much of this as you can, so keep it coming. Thank you to you and the team, and I look forward to this discussion, it's going to be one of the best things we talk about over the next 90 days, three, four months, is what does this city want to be and where they will spend together. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, and just a reminder, there is absolutely no ordinance inside of this plan, right? They'll, adopting the whole thing is in ordinance, but.
But all, all the details, we need to.
Would be figured out in their own individual stakeholder redevelopment process, so, all right, thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Forward to senior work in the community.